The call is made to order for the board trustees of the town of Tallahassee. Item number one, approve or reject considered agenda consisting of minutes of the regular meeting held on November 9, 2015?
I just want that we don't count it.
Right.
So that I can get it.
Yeah, I just got it.
To get it.
Uh, this time. Yeah, he's got it about Gina's too. He's got it. Yes, he's got it.
I'll move forward.
It's not had Gina.
Is that right?
You're just getting away.
Well, it's on number three. That was supposed to be on public works. I just took three.
And so no action on number one? No action on number one? Item number two, approve or reject considered agenda consisting of minutes of a special meeting held on November 16, 2015? Do we have that? Special meeting, not followers?
Do you want to approve it?
We have followers.
Are you?
Whether I didn't have my... Everything's in there? Sorry, what? The special reading, it's not important because that was for, uh... So, the number...
The wrong day.
The third one? No, it's not the wrong day. The number three on here is supposed to be on public works.
No, what they're talking about is this one.
Yeah, the number six. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. This is no good. This is a public works one. Okay?
On number three?
Yeah.
Or on number two?
Right, yeah. That is number two.
And that number sixteen?
No, this is the...
Number sixteen is this one?
Right. And this is public works. This one's public works.
The emergency.
Right. If you look right here, look right here, it says, "The board of trustees, town emergency special reading, December 9."
Into the public works.
Right, and that was the wrong one. So, no actions that Gina did before.
So, are we doing anything on number two?
Number two?
I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion. I second that motion. Any more discussion? Vote.
Your name?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Martin? Yes, Gina?
Yes. Item number four, approve or reject general fund purchase orders?
Okay, number three, no action.
Yes.
Ron, you still there?
Yeah.
On Mr. Midwest radar, do you?
Yes.
Did we do that last month, too?
I don't think it went through.
On the what?
On the radar. That's just a radar, right?
Yes.
And was that one we had that was there?
Announcement that you said go ahead and do the fix.
That was just a separate one, probably.
Yeah, it was a separate one where they...
We did one last month.
Right, it was for Cal right near...
Oh, that's the one they got.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one that would have come in around there for three, six miles or something.
Okay, so it's two separate ones. Okay. And this was that broken one that you got fixed and saved us. How much?
Uh, it was about a third, something like that.
Ronnie, what's our, how do they advertise for Halloween?
Uh, that was the, was it thirty dollars?
Thirty five dollars.
That was really my mistake because I went ahead and did it. Was gonna do it myself. And it was when all that was going on and I forgot. And it, and they got it, they sent the bill in and it was approved before she, if it was going on. So, if you don't approve it, I'll figure it out. So, because it was long hours.
I told them all split it. It really wasn't for the sake of...
It was, yeah, it was just another bill. I mean, I had told, they had called. They had called and wanted us to take it out, the Halloween bill and everybody. And I said, "Yeah, I'll figure it out." And we just, we just...
So, they just...
So, they sent a bill and then very low. So, it was my fault.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
I don't mind just paying it.
Well, look at this time, boy. That's him.
All right, the Christmas bonus will pay for it.
You can wear that Santa hat every night, Ron.
Okay, and Shirley is for the thousand dollar invoice and this is for the work on...
My can, my can, right?
Ronnie collected a thousand dollars in donations and the bills was thousand dollars. Now those donations were earmarked for the fifty dollars donors. I'm not worried about it because I personally donated fifty dollars. Might as well be some help.
What they're making for Halloween?
Halloween, yeah. Okay, okay.
And the, and the paper deal, it's, we should start getting, be able to get award of that sometime in January, the first of November. I'll call Sheila yesterday.
Make a motion to approve general purchase orders?
We have a motion, so in a second. Any more discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes. Item number five, public forum. Anybody here for the public forum?
Yes, I have a couple things I need to bring up.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, there's a storage building near a church in the highway by Bell's Restaurant where the storage, uh, the platform to build the storage on is raised up. And, uh, long and short of it is it floods the neighboring property, apparently, in September. And, uh, this is, uh, they documented with, you know, pictures and stuff, a lot of pictures.
So, they built a pad that they have stores built on?
Yeah, it's been there for a long time, but it's just been flooding for a long time. I remember some time back that Ralph Sipas complained about a flooding issue. Now, I don't know how that was resolved, but this is something that either is gonna go to a lawsuit or, you know, without some kind of intervention from the town on doing this. He's called and they requested that the people did a trench or something, deflect water, you know, rent it somewhere else behind their property into the ditch, you know?
Okay, so it'll be...
Maybe it wants to Randy Peis, Miss T D Jackson.
So, Randy, you want to talk about it? Is it on Randy's property?
Yeah, it's behind his property. He asked me to bring it up because he doesn't know what the city's like, uh, how the permitting is handled, you know what I mean? What are the requirements in order for some, do you come and file for a permit? Do you have to get some kind of an impact study? Is any of that a requirement?
No, it's not at this time.
Okay, so where does, does he have to resolve that in a private lawsuit or how does that work?
It's, uh, we can most definitely send the, uh, check out.
Send somebody?
Send, uh, the guys. We can send them down.
Okay.
Is, is that okay with the commercial? So, the storage building is on Randy's property?
No, it's, it's a...
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about the commercial storage buildings that we built there next year?
Yes, yes, yes. So, I'm assuming that, you know, when you put up a commercial enterprise of any kind, there's gotta be some kind of a permit process for the city?
On that, yes, there was because it was built in a residential. We had to sign it.
Okay, so, so, um, I'm just saying whatever...
You do look at the ordinance, so you can see what's under the list.
We'll send Kenny and Russell by.
Okay. Uh, all right, that resolves that one now. I still, I know you guys get sick of me because I've been talking about it for years. I keep talking about it a lot. There's, uh, some sick dogs roaming. They're hungry, they're unhealthy. I'm pretty sure they're unvaccinated, they're un-fixed. Uh, and dogs and cats, too. Uh, there's, uh, you know, some of them are aggressive, some of them have been chasing children down the street. Not, I mean, not anything vicious, you know, they're pretty little dogs at this point.
Yeah.
Uh, we still have people having litters. My neighbor has another litter, you know, because two dips litters a year is just not enough, I guess, you know, and they let them die of worms and everything, they suffer. Uh, so I, I've, in the past, I've made some complaints for animal cruelty, which I feel like it summarily dismissed. Okay, one of the things that PETA did for me was, in one of my complaints, they offered a voucher. They're still trying to get it to me after weeks. It's been two months. They gave me a voucher to help get one of the animals spayed because it was just staked out in the yard, you know, where all the good dogs come to mate with her. And she had two litters of dead pups recently. So, I mean, within the past year. So, anyway, I, you know, I, I, I will do two things. I'll commit to two things, maybe more, but two. I will, um, finish this animal ordinance for y'all to look at and we'll bat that around until we get it where, you know, people feel like they can live with it. Uh, I will go in support of, and Ronnie's helped me with that a little bit. And, um, I would go, I would be in support of an ordinance enforcement officer, you know, to not just do that, but I mean, all the other ordinances, but certainly if we had a very clear, clear policy on animal control, that would be helpful.
And that's what we're looking for, or...
Yeah, I would provide a list of standards of care so that, uh, you know, our veterinarian can go look at it and go look at the dog and say, "Yes, the dog's healthy. Yes, no, the dog's not," you know, and make some recommendations. And your enforcement officer then will have guidelines to go and make some, either do some education or help the people or make some other, you know, more serious provisions. So, that's what, the other thing that I hate to connect to, but it's gotta be done, is to do a nonprofit, start the paperwork on a nonprofit. I'm not a good fundraiser, but I'm, I'm happy to start the paperwork so we can get something, you know, going where people can volunteer. For me, getting people to donate or volunteer is difficult.
Very difficult.
It's very difficult. And I've seen other people try to start things like this fail. Um, and so, but I'm willing to at least put the things in place to build, give a platform. I can't keep complaining about, without putting some, you know, solid...
Kenny, Kenny, granted, you can throw that to him on it. I've seen some more, more dogs running in packs. Yeah, and if they don't want to aggress that for long, they're gonna start getting aggressive.
Well, they'll get aggressive, but, you know, we don't know if they've got rabies or not. And we certainly are aware that they haven't been vaccinated. I'd be really delighted to hear folks on that. And, uh, you know, the point that they're already chasing kids down the street and stuff, they, they get that prey instinct, that prey drive, and when they pack up like that, you know, it's just a matter of time till some bad happens.
But when we have dogs that are aggressive, well, that is called the police department.
They're not satisfied with that anymore. We just gotta, we gotta do something to prevent that.
And you can do it for...
We can do that. We can make those calls.
And it goes deeper, and it goes deeper than just picking up dogs.
Yes, it does. It also, another bonus of this, I'm trying not to take up too much of your time, but I've tried to make this report so many times and I've been shut down, so I'm, I'm gonna just keep kicking at the door here. But it, it allows our officers an opportunity to get on the property and go and look, see where they want to have that opportunity. So, it's a prevention for crime prevention, a crime, crime detection, or an opportunity to, you know, to bake cakes to people that are out of, out of snuff. And so, um, it does, it opens up a lot...
I assure you, we have a, I assure you, we have a good plan in place.
Yes.
We're just waiting to put it in.
Right, right. And so, a good solid policy, you know, that was one that you can live with, and then maybe that could be expanded and built on over time would be the appropriate thing. And let me just share this because a lot of people don't know. I don't know how many of our kids have conduct disorders, but conduct disorders turn into antisocial personality and psychopathic behavior crimes. You know, that leaves people devoid of compassion and feeling. And kids that have an opportunity to properly care for an animal are believed of those potential harms to their existence. It's a proven fact. The researchers there got it documented. I wrote a paper for y'all last year about that. I was never able to present, and I still have that data, and I'll be happy to rewrite that as well so that you can take a look at it.
I'll see you.
Thank you for your time.
Welcome to next month's agenda to go ahead and start force registration.
Do you want it in the paper?
I mean, on the list, we've got the ordinance already sent in. I'm waiting on that paper.
It needs to go in the paper.
Well, you know, I'm sure that...
This is required verification of vaccinations for babies.
Yes.
That would be one way of doing it.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, they have to present. I actually have a...
Uh, could, could we divert those funds into an animal control? Could we line item that? Airmarket for animal control, even if prior to the point that we have an officer, you know, or somebody to look at that. Could we, could we do that so that we have...
Which, which form? I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
Well, we don't have a collection of them yet, right? Our registration for animals.
Actually, we do have that line item. It's under animal control.
Oh, okay.
The only registrations we get are the ones that do receive fish or whatever. I do have that as an animal rating, so it's being tracked.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll register my dog.
Okay.
Okay, and I was gonna put this under your business, but this was the old one that I found, and this is something I typed up. I want y'all to look at it and see what you thought. And then when people come in, and I'm also redoing the, um...
We'll vote on something later, so we can put it in the...
Well, I don't even know that it used to be voted on.
Well, for Jake to perform that, I don't know.
I mean, it's...
Saying I'm just...
Yeah, it's, I don't even think it used to be voted on. I just kinda wanted y'all's opinions on it, see what you thought, because this is just a clearer...
That's fine, yeah.
It's basically the same information.
Just one sheet at a time?
Yeah.
All the same?
Well, I have two, two, you can do two animals on this sheet.
Well, if they get four to two, three, four, you have that penalized.
Right, and that was the, uh...
Right, but we're gonna put another out, another order in place, so you'll be able to tell if they're... More than one is there. You know what I mean?
Uh, that was, when you had that, I don't know.
Uh, yeah, I have only text, but right, I'm gonna do it.
A camel, a camel license.
Or a camel license.
They had four to three, they had that camel license.
Well, like I said, when, uh, when you file an affidavit, we're always gonna file by date, but that doesn't make any sense. So, since it's gonna be by affidavit order, yeah, we'll be able to see how many animals they already have.
And then to have the ordinance written, they have that.
The ordinance is actually already on there at the very top of it. I included the ordinance.
They put the camel license on.
Yep.
If they have line on there for a camel license, if they have a warrant.
I can add it.
Yeah, and there you are.
Sure.
Okay, no worries.
Well, we'll get something going for...
I don't want to work on that today.
Thank y'all very much for your time.
I remember...
Any more?
We wanted to...
Nobody else?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. How are you on? Oh, good.
Um, I am here for behalf of Lee Oliver. She sends our apologies for not being able to meet here in person tonight. But Tallahassee Public Library will be applying for a grant from the rural Oklahoma Community Foundation that provides opportunities for citizens to improve themselves in communities in the area of interest in arts, health, and libraries literacy. Deadline for this application is tomorrow, December the fifteenth. We will receive the notification, uh, of the trustee, the decision of the trustees regarding the grant request by February the first, two thousand sixteen. Once we know that we have the council's support of this grant, we will submit this grant by midnight tonight. There are other requests that the library has asked for pertaining to our meeting room and internet streaming. But what pertains to the city, we enrich the quality of the life of Tallahassee by building an outdoor amphitheater and installing benches at the city park, Tallahassee City Park. Ensure the public safety with a twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven video surveillance camera and have the ability to extend internet services to the parks and programs for events. We do not ask for any matching funds or the city's help on the project, although this grant will benefit not only our town, but we will, we just need to know if we can say that we are partnering with the city of Tallahassee to use city property at the city park to build a sixteen by twenty-four screen sheet metal, install metal benches, and install an electrical outlet. We are willing to work out the logistics of the exact location and the simple design of the area, which includes an outdoor amphitheater and seating area with the city and council once we are awarded the grant.
Ruth, do you have copies of that on...
Not of this, but I do have copies of what the excerpts of the library's...
Right. Can we get a copy of the...
It has that much data for the grand.
Yeah. This is the part with...
That's on the rural...
Thank you.
Um... The rural Oklahoma Community Foundation. She said the library has asked for four galvanized metal benches in this grant, and we'll be encouraging other business individuals to do the same for Addon City. The library can allocate a channel for the city park on our existing monitoring security system for a new security camera to be installed at the front of the library that would be pointed directly across the road to the park. The police will have access to monitor park activities remotely twenty-four sevens. Security camera that we will be getting retail for one thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars, and we will be able to get it at cost for nine hundred ninety-five dollars from our operating systems IT department. The wireless access point would be used with a wireless extender that would be, that would enable the use of free Wi-Fi at the city park when there are events at the park.
Ruth, what's the sheet metal for? The sixteen by twenty-four sheet?
To do the screen, like for movie?
But you can't project the beauty on, on sheet metal. What I'm here, what I'm thinking of is loud. You need that white reflection for the... Okay.
I wanna go up sheet metal and I believe it's wide.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that it's probably a wide.
Okay, so, man, you've got, my thinking of an amphitheater is you've got a stage...
And the surroundings.
And the surroundings. But I'm not seeing any funds in here except, unless it's all in there in the sheet metal price. Would a sheet metal be three sixty? Where is sheet? There are fifty dollars for a sheet?
Well, sixteen by forty is, is, uh...
They should be four by, is it like four by eight sheets?
Maybe it's there.
I know, I...
I'm sure y'all researched it.
Yeah, she did. This is what she's included in for grant. This would be included, though, all this. All she is asking is that the city would allow her to use the property across from the library if we are even approved of the grant.
And I asked her specifically of where this property was. She could say across the street. I don't know.
You know, it's the hillside there that they've been cleaning out.
And so, isn't it upper part above the former? My comment for us is this gonna, she's talking about in the amphitheater, it's just behind and below.
Right.
So, we can't take away from what's there for the former. I feel, I'm here, do you have a, do you have a drawing? Has anybody drawn it out? Just sketched it out?
She hasn't even got that far. She's just been dealing with making. So, she can actually submit it to my...
Well, it's not happening inside the night.
Yes, and I don't have a... Yeah, but they're not asking any compensation from us.
No.
They're just asking you to...
To use the land?
Right, and the land, which would be... I would like to know which part of the land?
Well, we can work that out, I think, you say.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Work out the distance, maybe.
Be specific now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can work out the distance later, I think. I mean, it went paper a little bit, theater up there.
So, it would be okay for her to say that the city of Tallahassee is in agreement with partnering?
Do you need a letter for your grant?
I'm getting a motion to approve.
No.
You could do, could you do your new business?
I'm pushing out, I thought it was one, so that's why I was going back through here. I didn't, nobody told me to not mention that, right? Uh, Ruth, we'll vote on that and give, uh, the, uh, under new business. And I understand if you don't wanna stay for that, we can call you, whatever you wanna do.
She, I've, I've got to take all of this back to the library because she will be back because she does submit by midnight.
Do you wanna do the move?
Midnight tonight?
Midnight tonight.
But four, it's not fifteen. What, you said fifteen?
It is, but she does submit by midnight tonight.
Let me move the business up. No objections from the council. I have number thirty-three. Is there any new business for the town? I have something to give you.
Okay, might take a motion to allow the library to build an amphitheater?
Apply for the grant.
To apply for the grant, to build an amphitheater to partner at no cost to the city.
Okay.
You have a motion in a second? Any more discussion? Vote.
Your name?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes. Okay, the other business was, are we still renting out the...
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Are you renting out?
Do you need a letter tonight, Ruth, or...
No, no.
Are...
It's a spec.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We had the guy in... Who does the...
Emil.
Yes. He wants to what?
He wants to look at a building for rental.
I don't know. You didn't tell me.
Yeah, that's what they said. You have to decide, again, in my opinion, you may need to sit down and decide. We're gonna do, because we got certain business interaction due to cultural center there.
Yeah, but, uh, maybe we need to get a refund because there's several that want, maybe we need to get something...
In my opinion, town should be in business for rented property.
Well, you know, shouldn't we understand that what we have is...
Agreed.
You mentioned we already won, but for rented property right now, they're buying their own money. We sit there and rent that thing, get six months free rent, what? So, I mean, we don't need to be in business renting property.
Okay, but right now, instead of you not making us any money, so I would say we should entertain letting them look at it if they're interested, bring it to the board, and we'll...
And they need to do is have a space, maybe just have options on to do it.
Well, I think what they need to do, if someone's interested in it, is they need to bring this proposal on what they want to do. I mean, to me, that's, and then, uh, because just having them show up saying, "Okay, I wanna..." There's no telling what's going in there. I mean, they need to tell us what their plan is, and there's no free rent. We got a contract before.
I know, but not for, we got a contract. They had to assign a new lease.
Okay.
And we have... I do, I do a question, I don't know how much, uh, cities do rental properties. I don't think it's really a scope of what...
Yeah, but...
...they should do. I understand at this point, it's better to rent it than for it to sit there for a while.
Right.
But I'm also asking that for sale.
Yeah, we can sell.
Now, I'm still, not going to a special election. It has to be, but not a lot of people.
So, do you have that and the housing, the light government, too?
And...
Okay.
So, we need to, is this something we need to ask the board just now?
I think we need to have a big discussion.
I was just gonna say, this is just, well, I don't think y'all need to think about because... Why would we have a discussion on what we wanna do with it if we have several that want it? We just haven't bring us a proposal on what they want. Give us a discuss.
So, you want, you want, look at people that wanna do the voting.
So, let them make sure for example, yeah, so we can look at it. This is wasting time to have a special reading, but, I mean, just let them get some proposal, then we'll discuss. Okay, say it. Okay. Just what I said, I guess, for rent. If one of y'all wants to... It's work that we can pre-merge that field. Okay. Basically, what we're... So, everybody needs to have a chance to do it.
Yeah, you don't do it one at a time. It wastes all our time.
Yeah.
Do it.
And that's for...
Anybody interested in using the American Legion building, make us a proposal.
Yeah, give us a proposal when it needs to be taken.
Yeah, I'm sitting here thinking, why would we worry about it like this, second, when you may get it better off for six months now and go down and evaluate the building first?
Well, that's what all your property can be, because you're still evaluating it.
Ron, you don't need to worry about my property, Ron.
But you're saying with...
You wanna, you wanna worry about each other.
Hey, 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 okay. Number six.
What I'm saying is, let's decide... What I'm saying is, let's decide what the building needs, get it up to shape. So you evaluate the property first.
So you want to do that?
You can go deep, go down, so many years.
Okay, please do.
And then if we do anything, we need to advertise in the paper, give everybody.
Well, after you do the talk, you want to.
All we need to do is put a for rent sign there, don't be good.
Okay.
It's cheaper, one dollar for sale, or even your Visa card, or a rent on the little door.
Okay.
Somebody don't want me to.
And it's not an emergency, so let's put on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda, putting, uh, discussion and action on location of, whatever that. Okay, I never see a discussion and action on hiring an attorney.
Will put six and seven together?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
I mean, they're consensus of seven, I mean.
Okay, so let's leave six and do seven.
Yeah, put the button together to study.
Anyways, discussion and action on hiring an attorney for Tallahassee. Discussion and action on hiring Montego, that's the town of Tallahassee.
I mean, he should be interested, he'll do it, live two hundred, every day, either look at five hundred.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so I'm sitting here more and more than two hundred for the bargain. You know.
Did you get that letter after the one?
I mean, we need to get somebody who's willing to do it, we can do it for five hundred a year and go on if we don't, you know.
That was the number one thing, was it that letter from, um, OK? Was.
I mean, let's just go ahead and do it, and we don't like if you're not changing it, you know. If we don't have anybody else interested, we have to talk to each other. If you're doing it for two hundred dollars, either had to go up to five hundred for there.
So, uh.
And then we talked about it for how many months? You know.
Do we have like a term period or are we going to do?
Nina haven't said.
I'd say do it for one year and then go on.
So then I do, it costs us two hundred dollars.
He's not gonna be here every meeting.
Yeah, he doesn't want to be here.
There's no sense in being here every meeting.
But what I'm saying is, okay, we need to hear this meeting, is it not charges two hundred dollars if you're out here, two hundred dollars?
See, my home, Sean did, when we did the cap it, uh, yeah, but he only charges three hours, no matter how long he was here.
No, he wouldn't, he charged us more.
Now, he charged.
Yes, no, he charged us more, I saw four hours out on me before.
Can I have one of those?
He charged more. You know, and so we, we need an attorney, and he's still interested, willing to do it. And everybody's starting to have to pay more for one, and that's the other. So I'll make a motion to complete, and our logos deserve to come in there.
Well, I don't have a dollar amount.
It's very good, so.
Well, two hundred dollars an hour.
Two hundred an hour.
Well, I have a quick question, because we were saying we will.
Hold on just a second, because we have a motion on the floor.
Say.
Any discussion?
Okay, now we have a second. Now we have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Now, we do a flat rate and anything over that, we have negotiated a price on contract, and we'll just set it up that way, does flat rate for when they come to meeting, if it goes over that, you split the negotiated, pre-negotiated amount that carries over. We do that, some meetings might not last that long, they never do a flat rate, none of them last longer, we have the additional.
It's lost sometimes because you can sit here with that.
We could have a contract, go ahead, hard to do a contract, and do it.
Okay. Thank you.
It helps us out. We can all do that with the other attorney. Yeah, but rate time to meetings, but then that changed.
Third person by the other, and the other time he called, can he document it on the phone, on a.
And Mark was.
I don't know.
Yeah, thank you, he said he would.
He said he wanted one person being, the one to contact him all four or five of us.
Okay, so we have, uh, any more discussion? Vote.
Okay, yes, Donnie.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Item number eight. Uh, what I meant to have on here, discussion and action supervisor reports, was just like, we used to have a line up that was just supervisor reports, you know, you had your attorney's report, supervisor's report, stuff like that. That's what I want on here, and then we can read their reports at that time and discuss what they need, we need to discuss.
I like the.
I'm not sure why it wasn't, was ever taken off, but, uh.
I like the, uh, new format of the plea for.
Yeah, but it's.
I do, very nice.
We're getting there. I saw it on each, six apartment screen, part of public works, I guess, I don't know if we need to have a section to have. I was gonna forget, put hours on some names, some hours in plus, I think he was, you know, honey, hours spent.
Do you need more detail?
Let's give a little more detail, like this, it's a little bit thicker, some lanes, they'll put, install cover, twenty, thirty, thirty, how many hours, let's see if they can do that. And let's get a little, let's get more detail.
Yep.
And then if you'll notice, he's got over here this time too, he talks on every place.
I like.
That's good. I don't press it. It'll be good.
Donnie's on one, hard work on that. Uh, item number nine, discussion and action regarding authorization for the release of bank records to state investigative audit. Make a motion to approve. We have a motion, I second that motion, any more discussion? Vote.
Okay, yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number ten, discussion and action regarding amending the two thousand fifteen sixteen budget.
Do you want me to review the budget a minute, or are you gonna have a special meeting for it around the same time?
Where are you on here?
That's better, maybe the doors, figure out.
Okay.
Wait, you know what would be great too, is if you guys will, we have a board that's special meeting, so we don't start from scratch, because you've got something to start with.
Yes.
Okay. Item number ten, no action. Item number eleven, wanna.
Please, please, it's no action, so it's an open next month.
Okay. Item number twelve, discussion and action on new year meeting schedule, bestie or holders. I've already tucked it up, pretty laid out, if you have any concerns, look at that.
It's well.
I guess that's different, it looks like.
Is it the, uh, meeting schedules?
Well, yeah, but I got, I got.
Okay. So do we need a vote on it?
October, the reason why is, it's.
Father's Day.
Father's Day.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and we're close for city hall, so it doesn't make sense for everybody to go off of work that day.
Okay.
You know, you can just buy a Father's Day on the phone.
Well, that's fine. So are we going, are we going to do it on Tuesday night or the following Monday? Because we really thought we'd do it on Tuesday.
Tuesday night, because the following one, this will be, that's kind of like to have.
I have it on that Tuesday.
That's all.
Yes, okay. Here, yeah, that's just here.
I'd like the most way to prove the two thousand sixteen schedule.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote. For that, yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Love it, yes.
Jean. Yes. Item number thirteen, discussion and action on being with Donna Henry, Tallahassee branch, Barrow State Bank, is checked sign on in town Tallahassee.
I make a motion to approve Donna Henry.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote.
For that, yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number fourteen, financial report. Okay, you have them.
What you do, it's just that when I did cut the course, they didn't ask for anything specific, so.
Okay.
I was just hanging out, I'll tell you guys what it would be.
Okay.
There really wasn't anything in there that you guys aren't any, uh, or are you aware of in terms of anomalies? Uh, you guys are pretty online, why some numbers are different.
My only concern, most facts, I believe are three thousand. No. Thirty-three hundred and a half. There's not one item that causes to go over, but combination. Was there one item that stuck out?
No, not at all, no, it was just a combination.
Uh, why would we not have transferred anything out of public works, since we have a place to do that, man, I think.
Well, because I could do that, it plays bottom line every month, but the fact of the matter is, we didn't need the money in the general fund, and so I wasn't gonna do that to manipulate.
Number three thousand and a half.
I understand, but I, okay, I'm not going to manipulate the bottom line. So what I'm saying is, if I didn't need the cash in the general fund in order to pay the bills from the unrestricted money, I'm not gonna do that just to give you a bottom line, when in fact, it's just a subsidy anyway, and the town's not general, they can run it.
Are we, we, we've never agreed that we're supposed to have a ten percent carryover?
That's a completely separate discussion, I mean, it's around why I didn't transfer the money over to make the bottom line.
Right, but I mean, as far as the ninety percent rule is, we should be setting aside ten percent of our revenue tax allowance, which should, we've got our base state in.
You know what we ought to do, Donnie, just like I asked, you and I ought to have a separate meeting and sit down and do all these numbers that you wanted to, is what we need.
Well, I mean, am I wrong, I get what I'm saying here.
Listen, we said it, Donnie, you're right, I'll offer you a separate meeting so we can do this in pieces. I'm not trying to be right, it makes no difference to me, okay?
There's not, the rules say we should be carrying over ten percent?
We should be carrying over ten percent, but we're not far from extending money until we hit the ninety percent, that statute does not apply to us.
So you're saying we should go extend it when we get to that month, on every day.
No, Donnie, Donnie, please listen to me, I said at the last meeting for public works, while it may be the best principle, and I completely agree with that, that doesn't mean it's a state statute. That's all I'm pointing out to you, I'm gonna excuse myself.
Should, yes, what?
Do you want to put the ten percent into separate account?
As a carryover.
Do you, do we need to do that? So it's totally out of.
I mean, so could we dump, or spend a hundred percent of our money like we always did?
So this is something the board needs to decide on, well, we're asking for that. We could, we could put that in a separate account, totally get it out of there, so we have to look at the actual money and capacity.
If we're gonna do that, then we need to establish a separate bank account. In my mind, what makes poor sense, like I was talking about earlier, once we get those audits up to date, we establish those balance balances, I'll be able to report by fund and show by fund, this is unrestricted, this is restricted. I'm making do with the information that I have, and that's why you have this highly consolidated financial statement.
But we have the information from last year. We're not fabricating anything from last year.
Donnie, I'm not fabricating.
Well, what I'm saying, that's been pre, pre-building the documents.
So.
You know.
It carries over from more than just last year, it's dependent on.
But we know how much revenue we made in last year.
We'll have separate one on there.
But we do know exactly how much revenue we brought in in twenty fourteen. And that's what we set our budget on, is revenues twenty fourteen.
So that's.
Not two thousand ten, not two thousand eleven.
When you're talking about period remittances, it does add on year to year to year. And I understand we know rest, you're right, all I'm asking you for is a separate meeting so you can have every single number that you want.
And I'm all right with that, but we have to do it like Rhonda said, we keep putting it off, putting it off, and we can't make decisions to remember, I believe, where we're at.
Okay, so what are you holding in, I mean, what's holding it up, set it up, do you want it?
Well, we all need it, it's for all of us. We can do it, we can do it, redo the budget.
Very special. You guys, mind, I have multiple eyes.
Okay, so we do, that's where we keep not getting things figured out, we say let's do it, because then we say we can't do it.
This is a. Periodize three.
Well, I said you need to.
Okay, you know what, I, I pose something to put it in another account. Just get it out of there, so we don't turn at it.
That would work for me, because what good does it do us to do all our office, get our office done, if we have no tax and rent?
That's great.
And what good does it do us to discuss these things when the person that should be answering runs off?
Because who can you ask it to?
I'm asking simple questions here.
Donnie, I don't even understand what you're asking.
That might, I mean, when you look at the bank statement, right here, it says eighty-nine thousand, we do not have eighty-nine thousand dollars in our general fund to spend. Period. Sixty-something thousand of that is fee money, we can't even touch. Another twelve thousand, five hundred.
That's fee money set up in a separate account.
No, it's right there, it's in that general, it's on the eighty-nine thousand. And that's why I asked to get it out of there, so it doesn't work like that. And then we have another twelve thousand, five hundred, so nineteen thousand available, that is already here for our profits. So we can't touch that for anything, so we have seven thousand dollars, all we have in that account, it shows eighty-nine thousand, if y'all think we have money, we don't. By the ten percent carryover that the state recommended, we didn't have forty-seven thousand. So we have to sit down to come up with some agreement to how to do the money.
But how many times do we have to sit down to do this?
Till we get it right.
Okay, well, then let's get it, sit down and get it right the first time.
Well, we tried.
When?
We tried to do that in the budget meeting, when we were setting this budget back in August. And, and I brought it up in that meeting, that we were already forty-five thousand in chemicals, we only had seven thousand budgeted, and the budget got proved anyway. And now we're sitting down here in December with zero money for chemicals, and we knew that, why didn't we fix it then?
And we couldn't fix it tonight, I ruined that budget.
But we haven't had time to look at that budget, well, I can pull out a budget and balance anything, but is it gonna be a working budget? It has to be a working budget, we have to sit down and identify everything on Iowa six.
Okay.
It's not easy.
So, uh, it's never gonna be perfect either.
No, it's never gonna be perfect.
It's never gonna be perfect, that's why.
But we knew this, but we knew, what we knew with this one was approved, it wasn't perfect.
We could do it in a month if we wanted to.
This one, it's not.
You know, but we have to, we have to get this figured out.
Discussion, item, are you through?
So, are we gonna, are we gonna have a special meeting to go over this, or are we just gonna pick again?
I will meet with you.
So, you all want a meeting for now, to sit down and figure it out?
No.
Okay, then we'll just have a meeting.
You said we need an meeting.
We did.
Okay. Donnie, I'm doing without me probably.
We'll do it.
No, she's about to surgery on Monday, I have surgery.
Monday.
Monday.
So you'll be ready too, Cindy?
Oh, yeah. No, I have to spend the night.
Can you go to your hospital, Brian?
I wish you would. I did get a pair of jobs.
You're supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say this, it amazes me how they can do all the part surgery, get you out of the room two or three days later. It amazes me what they can do.
But this helped me, I, I can drive.
I mean, we don't have to do this this month, I mean, it's crazy for us to do this this month.
I can't even do it for Christmas.
No, and I don't want to do it in December necessarily, we can need to sit down and then start going, or maybe it's first of year.
Okay, so it's, um.
I mean, our meeting at the end of January, it'll be the eleventh, if you want to meet a day, the week before, I mean, I don't care either.
Thursday before.
The Thursday before, maybe the seventh. And that may give you a bit of time to catch up on some audits and get a little break for the holiday, and be prepared, so.
What day?
Is the seventh, all right, for you guys on Thursday.
The birthday of the writing, how yours.
Yeah, the week one, you know, it's what I call breakfast.
Five thirty.
So are you writing September?
I'm good to play one, or you know?
Sure.
I'm good. Okay.
Maybe we need a kitchen.
Bloody pajamas. Um. So he said a special meeting for the.
On the fourteenth. We're gonna have a special meeting on the seventh.
Okay. Item number sixteen, discussion and.
We have to discuss that, and that will do need to be, encourage everybody to think of, and I told Rodney, I told Pete, so everybody start making their wish list. So we can do a strategic meeting and figure out where we want to go in this town, get the government.
Okay, uh.
But we can do that later today.
Strategic plan?
Yes, need to, sometime next first of year, narrow thing down, when everybody goes, where do we want to go in this town?
Yeah, people want to know what your vision is.
And what's due. And, and seventeen, we've already discussed that, the department, you know, is, uh, that type start in January, we discussed our final.
Do you have something on jack breaks? Okay, item number eighteen, discussion in action on brake ordinance, which would be the Drake brake thing.
Okay, where's that?
Inside of number eighteen.
Yeah, I guess I have a different one.
How do we have a different one?
I have, I have.
There is no reason, gosh, you have to.
There should not be more than one of these out here, there just should never be.
Donnie, we've got, I look for Aunt Cindy's staple together, have you looked over and got one of the, of the first?
I haven't, it's together.
She's got them all together, it's mine.
I just wanna hang off my computer.
Okay, okay.
Things follow good for that, to that point. See, my nineteen, my eighteen is being.
No, you're on public works.
Well, they're all the same.
No, no, it's not.
Reason for a nineteen.
It can't be, because this is the fire department right there.
Okay. This is town.
Right. It, 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 the fire truck is on the town, but I'm saying the one I got, showed from the. Okay, I know what you're saying, but I don't have public works anywhere to do, because I've got the fire department right there.
This one has public works, I think it is.
That one better?
Yes.
Okay, this one I got off my computer from the town, and this says, on number twenty-two, purchase pump for brush.
Oh, I sent you a second one, I sent you your first one, and then you called me and told me to add jack breaks, or to add the brake ordinance.
But this is the second one, not the first.
She said it's one of them, yeah, and there was just.
Is there one on the bottom? Um, number eighteen, and it, discussion in action on brake ordinance. Right, because you called me and asked me to add that.
Okay.
So, you have a policy that you want to.
Rodney sent, sent me one, did you get, did you get another one, over or something, to go along with it?
No, when I did talk to Frue, Frue told me all you all needed to do was pass, what they do there is just pass the, uh, ordinance.
Yeah, but we don't have the ordinance to pass.
You submitted one.
Yeah, this, what, or the ordinance?
No, but they're all, they're, they're basically all the same, there's no reason why we can't adopt an ordinance, just, uh, adopt that ordinance, they're reading the same.
Yeah, but, it, it needs to read what number, and, uh.
Because what you have to do is, you, you have to identify what the jack break is.
Right.
And then you, then you, uh.
Well, and rather than publish that ordinance once we pass it, so.
Can you give a Gina, just have Gina write it and add it for us with the ordinance number, and we can pass it ourselves?
Well, we can pass it, but we don't have an ordinance, no.
That's what I'm saying, so we just. I'm not gonna pass an ordinance, it's not out there yet.
Not that we haven't seen, do you want that number special meeting?
No. I have a meeting.
We don't need special meetings, it's turning to.
Wow.
Okay, um. Okay. Number nineteen, FEMA claims.
Yeah, we've gone, we've gone with it.
Twenty, no action, no action, we already talked about that. Number twenty-one, discussion in action on Christmas bonus. You just need to vote on public works. I make a motion to approve a hundred dollar Christmas bonus, you have a motion, I'll second that motion, any more discussion, vote.
Renee, no. Donnie.
Mm-hmm.
Ronny.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes.
I should fill.
Okay, item number, do you wanna sit that one to the front, talk about that, Donnie?
I have Rhonda, actually, twenty-one.
Twenty-two, no, twenty-three.
Discussion in action on composite.
Oh, yeah, that's twenty-two.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, like, Gina, looking at.
It's all the same.
I was, I have two opinions.
Keep going, Donnie.
Uh, this is from the fire department, this guest is for four.
No, I don't have the fire department.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. On compensation time policy.
Oh, wait a minute.
That's why I.
Ho, 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 I've had too much egg on.
That's why we wait.
So, now, action, twenty-two, okay.
Twenty-two, we have to, we do need to, we've talked about that.
Okay, we already talked about twenty-three, so no action. Now, twenty-four, brush truck.
Okay, take all that others, but I'm.
Discussion in action on purchasing a pump for brush truck.
And go left, and go left, your coffee's running out.
I do, it says, ch- chikishawal.
Yeah, it says, uh, T fire, and say, it's, it's here.
Is this for the spraying, spraying, is it for spraying, for mosquitoes, or?
No, this, this is for brush truck, on the one-ton truck, to, to put up brush fires and stuff like that.
Oh, oh.
The pump is twenty years old, and they're using a, an actual plastic fuel can for their tank, uh, pretty ridiculous, and the price are going up, and on the one we got, the bid for it here, not bid, but it's about, uh, uh, four thousand, one, five hundred dollars, that's the first of the year, and he's also done us a second, uh, price from another company, and it's forty-nine, nine, seven, and it's got a plastic tank rather than a aluminum tank like this one. So, uh, and I called, uh, Sheriff Wilson with the auditor's office, and we do not have to go out for bids for this, and so, we can actually approve this tonight, and give this, and.
Sounds good.
And say, we want to give it for anything, uh, because the salesman apparently picked it up, and he went to the show, and stored it to the garage, and if we didn't do it, he was gonna take it back.
Okay.
So, we're gonna pay a shipping, so four thousand dollars for a new pump, for a new holder.
So, are you making, uh.
He's got another kettle money, uh, he's got another kettle money, not even out of town, but it's kettle money, but he's taking it out.
Is kettle money not coming to the town?
No.
But we're gonna have to pay for it, and then do you bring birth out of kettle money? No, they're gonna pay for it, run out. They're gonna pay for it, run out of kettle. So, I make a motion to purchase this pump for brush truck.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second, any more discussion, vote.
Renee, yes.
Yes.
Ronny, yes.
Yes. Discussion in action number twenty-five, on emergency expenditure procedures.
Any more need?
Well, we haven't really discussed that one, but I guess we need to add that to our list of things we need to do, you know.
Well, we have, well, we have a policy and procedure.
Yeah, we talked about.
Well, that's what we talked about that evening the other night, and we wrote several things down, and, and, uh, we needed to just put everything in the policy. Yeah, and I have set, I ran off a copy of ours, to see, I don't have it with me tonight, but.
I guess one thing we need to do is clarify what's an emergency.
Crap running through your house.
Agreed, it's an emergency. Other than things that are emergencies.
Well, there's a lot, a lot of here.
The whole neighborhood crap. No word to the town, it's emergency, you know.
But how do we clarify, what, one person mentioned it's an emergency, and we all agree that those all are?
Well, if it's your house, it's an emergency, I think that's the.
Well, I, uh, uh, okay.
Could I, I, I have a, a service request, do I do that, just routine business, or?
A service request?
Well, yeah, there's a, when you go down Seventh and, and Helen, coming this way, you can't see until you get out in the middle of the road, because of the brush, and all the side of the road, cause I was wondering, is, is there somebody, somebody could trim that back, because it's been like that for, like, two years, I don't know.
Yes. Seven, the corner of Seventh and Helen, or is it the?
Out line.
It's a corner of Seventh.
There's several that need to be.
There's, there's probably a lot.
However, we only have two maintenance guys, but.
You know, this property is close to the.
Um, it's close to Mrs. James.
It's two blocks down from Mrs. James, and across the street from Dallas Hughes.
Yes.
This line.
Yeah.
It's on the street.
It's in between, yeah, Ms. James and Dallas Hughes.
I'll go that way tomorrow.
It's, it's brush that needs to be cut back off the street.
Okay.
It's probably a gento.
No, it's.
It's, 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 it's.
Let's. Okay, um, are we through on twenty-five?
I don't know.
Twenty-six. Is that just a policy we need to add?
I was working on that, and you, you were working on that, and I would get mine done, did you get?
No, I was, uh.
Getting comparables and stuff?
Yeah.
We'll do it in the next week. It's going along good.
Very good. Item number twenty-seven, approve or reject, entering into executive session under title twenty-five, section three oh seventy-one, discussing employment and hiring and appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining or resignation of an individual salary, public officer, employee Gina Jones.
Yes.
This is one that we.
I'll take executive session.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion, vote.
Yes.
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 Gina.
Yes. Tim, vote.
Renee. Yes.
Donnie.
Yes.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes. Item number twenty-nine, action, if any, from executive session.
So.
No. No action, okay. Item number thirty, approve or reject, entering into executive session under title twenty-five, section three oh seventy-one, discussing employment, hiring, and promotion, demotion, disciplining or resignation of an individual salary, public officer, employee Jack England.
I like that one.
We have a motion, and a second, any more discussion, vote.
Renee, yes.
Donnie.
Yes.